Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, this is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The chairman reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to make comment or post-question on any matter that is before the Board of Selectmen today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you come into the meeting room along with two sets of the materials that we'll be reviewing and acting upon today. Item number two on our agenda is to approve minutes from the regular meeting that was held Thursday, October 29th. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If there are no changes, is there a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented?
So move second.
Okay, without objection. Okay, in updates, I just want to begin today. We have a proclamation that we're issuing. Ms. Chu, welcome. It is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and we last year were fortunate enough to be able to present this at our board meeting to provide greater awareness as to the plight this insidious disease inflicts upon people. And what I'm going to do is read the proclamation, and then we can take a moment to present you the formal one. And if you'd like to take a photograph for purposes of promoting the awareness, we're happy to do that. Whereas in 2015, an estimated 43,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States. And 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is projected to become the second by 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late stage, and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas the recalcitrant -- pardon me. Broke the cardinal rule. Turn off your cellphone.
See? You got elected for 75 percent. This is what happens. They don't care.
Whereas the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. Whereas Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Greenwich and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Greenwich support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease, and are committed to nothing else than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the state of Connecticut are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Peter J. Tessie, First Selectman of the Town of Greenwich, to hereby proclaim November 2015 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the Town of Greenwich, and urge citizens to support and recognize the work that the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is doing to find a cure for pancreatic cancer. So Ms. Chu, we'll come down and we'll present this to you.
How do I help?
I would've thought everyone would've figured that out by now.
Thank you very much.
We have hoped.
I could be trained.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Proceeding with the updates, I wanted to begin the updates with a somewhat bittersweet announcement we have today. As you know, the Town of Greenwich is fortunate to have so many well-qualified and dedicated professionals who serve the town through their management and administration of the various departments and agencies of government. This morning, we are announcing that the Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services since 1989, Joan T. Sullivan, will be retiring effective February 1st, 2016. Her last day at work will be January 15th, 2016. First Selectman John Morgen had appointed Ms. Sullivan as Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services on August 14th, 1989. Joan has served the town with distinction as director for over 26 years. A few of Joan's work accomplishments include centralized contract development. Prior to Joan's reorganization, departments had to assemble and collect required paperwork for contracts. This improvement created -- well, this created delays and frustrations by both departments and vendors. Joan created a process to track insurance requirements so they did not lapse, thus ensuring the town was adequately protected. Joan implemented a lease program with a national purchasing alliance to allow for an easy process for information technology purchases. The lease allowed for a faster purchase -- purchasing process for the IT department, as well as reduction in outdated computers entering the waste stream as they were returned to the manufacturer. Joan worked with the Law Department to customize various contracts to meet the needs of numerous town departments. The introduction of service contracts allowed departments to quickly and effectively request quotes and authorize work while providing the necessary protections to the town. In addition to these highlights, Ms. Sullivan has been involved in several projects in Greenwich. Some of her favorite projects include consistently monitored commodity auctions for the purchase of electricity, natural gas, and fuel to ensure best pricing. Since fiscal year 2011, she has avoided over $5 million in utility costs. Since 2012, she has been the project leader on the voice-over-internet phone system upgrade. Through her leadership, she secured the funding and led efforts to create one unified system to replace the town's outdated system. Joan spearheaded the document imaging project to convert the town's numerous paper document records. Joan was an integral part in Nathaniel Willis' Project Renew, the new public safety complex, and the abatement and demolition of the Cosco Power Plant. Joan has presided over the procurement and implementation of many large-scale projects, and we have benefited from her meticulous management of our energy and commodity acquisitions. Joan, I wish you the very best for a long and happy retirement, and thank you for your over quarter of century of dedicated and high-caliber work here for the Town of Greenwich. A national search for the Director of Purchasing and Administrative Services will begin immediately. To give you a brief background on Joan, she earned recognition from the Universal Public Purchasing Certification Council by obtaining the Certified Public Purchasing Officer designation. This certification continued to reinforce her proficiency in professionalism in public procurement. Prior to working in Greenwich, Joan worked for NASDAQ in Trumbull, Connecticut. She began as purchasing coordinator in 1982 and was promoted to manager, purchasing officer services, administrative services department, 1984 to 1989. She started her career in purchasing with Jacob Brothers of Bridgeport, Connecticut, as purchasing assistant from 1974 to 1981. Joan next worked for Cumberford Corporation, Stamford, Connecticut, as purchasing agent 1981 to 1982. Joan received her Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology from the University of Massachusetts in 1970, and a management development program certificate from Fairfield University in 1981. On behalf of our board, I would hope all in attendance would rise and join me in a round of applause for Joan Sullivan for her dedication to the town.
Can I just say, Peter talked of her accomplishments, but there is -- would you agree there really is no one more kind and respectful than Joan? And I just have to say that to you, Joan. You really are so unassuming, whatever. You're gonna be missed.
Very much so.
There are copies of the statement here for those of the press who would like to have it for their work. And Joan, you know, you've got the littlest big shoes to fill. And we're gonna miss you, but I know you'll be no stranger to Town Hall. So, updates. Just briefly, we know Tuesday was the election. I think we're all pleased that we're back to serve the town for another two years. Feature events coming up. Veterans Day next week. There are several recognitions of our veterans. The Community Covenant of Care is beginning their, I think, third annual march down Greenwich Avenue, which this year is focused on recognizing the Vietnam veterans in our community and in the surrounding area. That'll be--
Mr. Chairman, just when you get to the November 11th thing, can I just mention through you that the New Lebanon Building Committee is meeting 8:00 AM to go over the three plans? It's at 8 o'clock on that same day.
Okay, sure. In addition to the Veterans Walk with Vietnam Vets run by the Community Covenant of Care, the American Legion Post 29 is holding their annual ceremony at 11 o'clock in front of the now restoration of hardware, and that's run by Chris Hughes. And there are a number of schools that have programs throughout the day. Some are the day before, some are that morning, but it's just a testament to the fact that everyone wants to pay respect to those who gave so much to our country. Mr. Marzullo points out that on that morning, the New Lebanon School Building Committee, for which he is the board's representative, is holding a meeting to do what?
To reveal the actual architectural plans, the plans.
Okay, to reveal the architectural plans for the school. So we'll look forward with great anticipation on that. November 12th, we'll be swearing in Fireman Eric Maziarz to the position of Lieutenant in the Cone Room. This is the result of the retirement of Billy Ingraham. For all those who know Billy, he has been with the Greenwich Fire Department for 38 years and is retired effective last week. So we wish Billy well, and certainly will congratulate future Lieutenant Eric Maziarz. On November 15th, there'll be an event in the Coal Auditorium sponsored by the First Selectmen's Economic Advisory Committee, as well as the Yankee Institute. It is a panel looking at the implications of the state budget and tax policy. On the panel will be former Selectman and gubernatorial candidate Ned Lamont, as well as State Senator Scott France. Again, it's at 5:00 PM in the Coal Auditorium. Future meetings, we'll be meeting with the YWCA regarding their domestic abuse services program and education outreach in our schools. They are looking to provide more, well, receive more support from the town financially in order to uncover the costs associated with this ongoing educational program in our high school, and also, I believe, programs tailored to the middle schools. Other future meetings, the Western Connecticut Council of Governments will be meeting in Danbury this month. The First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee will be meeting at noon on November 17th in the Mazza Room. That concludes updates. We will have one item under executive session, which is pending litigation. And aside from that, our next meeting will be held on Friday, November 20th, at 10:00 AM in this room. So, the next item is new business. We have no old business. And with us today, we have Melissa Evans, Traffic Operations Coordinator for the Department of Public Works, as well as James Michael, Deputy Commissioner. And they are with us for the purpose of establishing school zone speed limits for all our private schools in town. This is a continuation of their efforts to improve safety within the town and specifically add the private schools to what we've already done for the public schools. So, welcome to both of you, and thanks for your work on this.
Yeah, so if you recall back in February, I think we were here, February, March, somewhere in there, for the remainder of the public school requests for speed limits. Now we're coming back at, partially at Drew's request, at that meeting. He said to come back with the private schools soon after there. But we wanted to establish school zone speed limits at all the private schools as well. We will be working with each of the private schools. We've reached out to them on their opening times, their release times. And one thing that's a little different with the private schools than the public schools, with our public schools, you have an elementary school, so most all the kids are coming at the same time and releasing at the same time. With a lot of the private schools, they separate into different age groups because they will run everything from pre-K all the way up through high school. And so we had to work with those times. So when you look at the requests that we're sending to the state, the times are much broader than they may have been for the public schools. And part of that's because of some schools will start at seven -- they'll have a -- one school will have a 7:30, a 7:45, 8 o'clock, and 8:15 start time, all within the same school possibly. And so we tried to cover that whole range. But what we can do is I can go through each school and just kind of explain where we're going with each one, and then if you have questions from there, we can hit them as we go. So the first location will be the Covenant Sacred Heart in Brunswick, over on King Street. Their two campuses are somewhat adjacent. What we're asking for is a school zone speed limit on King Street from Lincoln Avenue up to Rye Lake, and that will cover the whole frontage area that those two schools are at. So the next one, Greenwich Catholic School, we currently have a school zone speed limit here, we're just better defining it. What we've noticed in going through some of our speed limits and looking at them, a lot of times they'll reference from a certain power pole or utility pole to another utility pole. If those poles were to get changed, or the numbering system were to get changed, it would not be very clear. So we've tried to say a certain distance from an intersection. So on this one, on North Street, we're going a few hundred feet north of Clappard Ridge to a few hundred feet south of the edge of their property, which is a little bit past Copper Beach Road there. So that'll cover that stretch. We're in the process still of getting approved through the state, the ones for North Street School, which doesn't quite reach to this distance, but it's in the same vicinity.
When you go to the state and ask for approval, do they link them with all of them together? Or they say, well, we have four?
They've asked us to apply for them in groups of three or four, because their process is they have pretty much one person up at the state that reviews all of these for the entire state. And they like to -- one of their requirements is they have to come and look at each request and see if there's anything that makes them think that that would not be accurate. So they drive down from Newington to look at all of these. So they've asked us to submit them as a request in groups of three or so at a time, so that if they come down and look at them, they have the ability to get to where they need to and then still get back within the workday. But we will send them in groups of three, all basically at the same time. So, and they'll just pick them off as they come. We did -- the ones that we had requested, as of today, we've only gotten three schools approved, actually five schools total. We had requested prior, New Lebanon and Central. Those were approved in the spring timeframe. Then another request we put in was for Western Junior Highway, Glenville School, and Eagle Hill. We just got that approval Monday or Tuesday this week. So we're in the -- we're still waiting on the rest of them. They said, the person who did the review, he said he has been out here and looked at all the other ones, and is just in the process of processing through, so. All right, the next one, Greenwich Academy and the Brunswick School, Upper School. This is kind of in a little bit closer to the downtown area, but on North Maple, we're going all along there to a little bit past North Street. We're also asking for on Patterson, a stretch here, because there are some students that walk and cross the road. We have a marked crosswalk there. And then we're also going on Mayor, there's a raised crosswalk on Mayor that we're asking for as well. So we're asking for that stretch. For Greenwich Country Day, Old Church Road, we're asking for a stretch from Fairfield down past the property of the school. And then on Fairfield, we're asking from Old Church on down to Hillside. They do have the bridge that crosses over the road on Fairfield that they've recently redone, but there is some access points, and there are students that access those fields down there. So we're asking for that one as well. All right, the next one, Carmel Academy and the Japanese School on Lake Avenue. So we're asking from Chapman Lane to a little bit past Carlton there, just past Rock Ridge, to compass both of their entrances. For Whitby School, which is up near the Parkway School, if you recall, our request for Parkway was on Lower Cross from Lake Avenue for a distance. This one will take, go on Lake Avenue, almost to Lower Cross, and up, you know, a little bit past Mary Lane there. And then finally, Stanwich School, we have the frontage along Stanwich Road there of their property. So those are the locations. We do have some of the private schools represented here. I think a couple of them have approached us with a couple minor time changes, so we're gonna work with them on that, from what our original request was. But we're presenting today with the hopes in two weeks, you guys go ahead and vote on this. We'll let the public make any comments and have a chance to look at this between now and then, and we'll, you know, look for a vote in two weeks.
I was gonna say, we can vote today. I mean, this is something that, to me, is common sense as to improve traffic safety and consistent with prior actions. Yes?
Sorry, can I just say one thing?
Sure, sure, sure. Come on forward. Come on, come on up, Blue.
Not to step on your toes if you want to do that, but a lot of these schools, unlike the public schools, don't have any existing signage, and a lot of them are on streets where we don't have a lot of signage. And the signs that we're planning to install are the flashing signs that we're familiar with from the public school presentation. When Mike and I discuss doing it in two meetings, I think it's to let some of the residents who maybe aren't aware that this is going to happen have some time.
Okay. I mean, that's a valid point. What do you -- when's the next meeting? We just said was the 20th. So it gives, yeah, two weeks.
You know, and I think also with the current backlog of the state that we've seen, and the fact that we submitted other ones back several months ago and have yet to receive those, I think the two weeks would be, you know--
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we don't acknowledge the representatives from the private schools, Mr. Webster, Mr. D'Angelo, and Mr. Reynolds, all distinguished retirees of the Greenwich -- oh, I'm sorry. And Whitby. There you are. Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Welcome. I'm sorry. Welcome to you. So, okay, thank you for your work on that. We will adhere to that past practice, and we'll act on this on November 20th.
This cost is being absorbed by us, not the private schools, right?
The cost, Mr. Marzullo asked, what is the absorption of costs to the town?
The -- this is not included in the budget, but it will be coming in, in the next year's budget. The quotes we've gotten on the ones for the public schools are running in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 20,000 per sign that we're looking to put in. We're looking to do approximately two signs per school times 14, so we're talking in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000 is what our budget number we're looking at for next year.
I only ask, I wanted to make sure that for some reason the private schools are not absorbing the costs. This is a taxpayer-funded thing overall, correct? This is not gonna be a--
Well, the goal would be to request it in the capital budget. If the private schools are wanting this to be implemented before the capital budget allows, or if the capital budget doesn't provide that funding in the next year, and they wanted to, you know, expedite that, we'd be happy to work with them on that, but we're, you know, not specifically asking for them to fund it at this time.
Not.
Not.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is to request for approval from the Harbor Management Commission for interim budget for the remainder of the fiscal year 2015, 2016. Joining us today is Mr. Frank Mazza, who's chairman of the Harbor Management Commission. Welcome.
Good morning again. The Harbor Management Commission has approved this interim budget. It's the first page in the packet. It's roughly a little over $26,000 for the remainder of the year. Our problem is, we inherited a system when we first started that was what I would call a continuation budget. It started back in 2007. Money was appropriated, money was expended, and it never ended. We asked last year from the Board of Estment, when we presented our first budget, to change it to a regular system. They failed to do so. We've talked to them since, and I think they've indicated now that they will do this, starting in July of next year. And just to show you the problem a little bit, if you look at the packet, the last page that we have, which talks about the appropriation statement 2015, '16 year, and beginning July 1st, shows temporary salaries with an $18,000 deficit. You know, and it shows professional and other services with a $47,000 surplus. I can look at it and figure it out because I've done budgets for a lot of years, but most people can't look at this and understand what we're talking about. So that's why we want to get into a fiscal year. We will present this for the rest of this year, and we will start within the next month working on a budget for the '16, '17 year. And we are asking at the end of this year, any money in this account to go back into the Harbor Management Fund, and we will start over from scratch. Then we will have a budget, I think, that everybody can understand. And that's simply what we're doing now. And we do need some money to get through the rest of this year, primarily for salaries and a couple of other minor things, but that's where we are. And I'm working with Ben. We'll go back to our next meeting and tell our commission that you have approved this or not have approved it. And then we intend to go to the December BET.
How much is the production of the plan? I know that that's one of the biggest -- that is the primary focus right now, the commission is to get that plan presented and approved. How much would you approximate we've spent just on that?
$12,000. That's what we're paying as a consultant. And actually, it may be increased because that was based on 120 of hours of work, and he's probably done 200 hours by now, you know? There's been a lot of extra work that he's had to do.
Yeah, I know that you've been extremely responsive to the land use agencies who had comments, and they had their own-- comments, and they had their own interests in wanting to incorporate some thoughts, which then requires him to look at it, so. But it's worth, it's worth it. When it's done, it will be an important resource for managing the waterways here.
What's in the account, Frank? What's the balance of the account?
Right now, 20, 26,000, 24,000 or something, that last page.
Oh, I thought there was, I'm sorry. I, I read that, I thought there was a lot more in there, like 100, never mind.
Yeah, it's, right now, the account has 24,055, 655 in it. I don't think we've spent any money since this printout has taken place. And we will be dropping a couple of things that you would see on that last sheet, like there's money in there for Social Security. I'm not sure why that ever got put in there, but the Finance Department isn't taking any money out of this account for Social Security, and so-
Last year, so when people said that, when we hear that there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in this account, there's only $24,000 in there?
No, there's $24,000 appropriated.
No, no, what's the balance?
The, oh, the whole account, about 225,000.
That's nice, 200, okay.
We took in this year, 41,000 and change. Essentially, when we go into a full fiscal year, we'll probably be requesting more money than that. So, you know, right now, we're not going to take in as much money as we would probably spend over a year. But again, it's a work in progress, then we're going to have to determine just what our budget will really be.
Great. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve this interim budget proposal for the balance of 2015, '16?
So, we'll-
Okay, without objection.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. The next item on our agenda is a request for temporary road closure for Davis Avenue for work that Eversource Energy is scheduled to do on Tuesday, November 10th, from 10:00 to 11:00 AM. The reason for the work is to reattach our conductors under the Metro North Bridge to energize the street light on the pole number 70459. They have worked with Rich Femenella, who's Superintendent of Wastewater Treatment, given the work that is going on within that vicinity to replace the, the force line there. So, welcome, if you could tell us your name.
Good morning, I'm Jeremy Schaefer with Eversource Energy. Tracy Allison asked me to attend today and explain what we're doing out there. Exactly as you said, we're going to be doing some work. We just like to temporarily close the road for approximately one to two hours with officer support out there to reconnect the street light that's been out for some time.
Great. Does anybody have any questions, comments, Mr. Michael, anything?
We're good about it. We're good.
Great. Do you have a motion to approve that request for temporary road closure for Davis Avenue for the bridge, work near the bridge, November 10th, from 10:00 to 11:00?
So, move a second.
Okay, without objection. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That completes the item under, items under new business. We do have appointments and nominations. Do we have any today?
No, but I, no, but I'm planning on zoning one, we have to.
Oh, I'll do that. Oh, we have to check to see if there's a vacancy. We have to, we had to see if Ms. Holsman resigned. I know she stepped off the First Selectmen's Advisory- Okay, so there's no appointments and nominations today. We do have an item under our Executive Session for pending litigation. We need to, even though it's on the agenda as Executive Session, specifically, it is an update on pending litigation, so we need to vote on that, just to, one to go into Executive Session for the purpose of pending litigation. So, is there a motion?
There is.
It's been moved by Mr. Marzullo. Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, that says of 10:44.